Members. The meeting is resumed. Just before we pause, I plan to draw a line. Members who are not at their seat, including Dr. Zhang, would be allowed to press the request to speak button, but we have not received any further requests to speak. I'll draw a line here. I asked the convener of the pro-establishment camp to communicate with the Pan Democrats. This meeting will end at seven o'clock. I will continue to deal with the items on the agenda. They may come back to attend the meeting. Legal advisor, do you have anything to add? That is in relation to what Mr. Chen Kimpou said. I have one more point of observation to make in relation to Pan Democrats and legal advice. On the fifteenth of October, the member presiding at the meeting allow a discussion about the security arrangements of the complex. I'd like to point out that on the fifteenth of October, that was the start of the election of the chairperson. In general, at the start of a session, we were quite lax in allowing members conduct of discussions. But the same issue has been discussed over six months. The presiding member has the duty to regulate and to control the progress of the meeting. But it doesn't mention in the legal advice whether there is such a duty, say for example, to um draw a line or to stop the questions. Thank you, legal advisor, Mr. Stephen Hall. First, I strongly condemn Mr. Kwok Wing Kin. Um, well, the person's looks like Mr. Kwok Wing Kin, who is from the Labor Party. And he has disrupted the conduct of the meeting. And he suspected to have um behaved in an disorderly manner in a public gallery. First of all, I ask Chairperson you to deal with the problem in the form of, in the shape of Dr. Fernando Zhang. As Ms. Yunis Young said, that is only chanting in a monotone. I think that he's not complaining about your commission of ultra virus. He's asking you to to kick him out. Since he is interrupting or disturbing the conduct of the meeting, please grant him his wish and send him outside the, out of the conference room. I've been quite tolerant if no, if um one doesn't storm at the chairperson's bench, I would allow the person to stay. Dr. Fernando Zhang, a member, has already made a request for you to stop speaking. Please return to your seat. Mr. Stephen Hall, do continue. Well, I do appreciate the um the persistence of senior members. I wonder why it's not Roy Kong who's doing it here? He is chanting mantra. It is unfair to those who are here. Well, since Chairperson, you have already made a decision, I won't challenge your decision. And I do hope that we will be able to continue with the meeting. In the past six months, Mr. Dennis Kwak has been abusing his power. It has given rise to a number of legal issues. Just now, Rebecca Chen talked about um a corrupt act of intimidating the chairperson to withdraw from the election. What are you going to do? I'm just going to stop there. And it's also cap three A two interruption of the meeting. Is because of the weakness of the S A L government for condoning uh black clad violence. That's why we're in this situation. I ask the Leggo um to be tough and strong and strictly in implement or enforce the rules of procedure. Mr. Chukar Fai. I echo what Mr. Stephen Hall said. Well, as members of the public could see, it's been a pantomime. Dr. Fernando Zhang standing there actually disturb others. Why do you still allow him to stand there? It's not just a minute or two. How can I freely express my opinion? Obviously, he is causing disturbance. You won't allow that in a classroom. Why would you allow him to do it in the Leggo? Can you ask him to stop what he's doing or ask him to go out to leave? Dr. Fernando Zhang, this is the final warning. I have lost count of the number of warnings I've given you. You continue to disrupt the meeting. I have to ask you to leave the conference room. Give me back my time. I haven't started. Let's wait for the security guard to perform their duty.
好，呃，其实保安是非常辛苦的
The security guards have a very tough job. I'm aware of your views, and I do hope that the meeting will be conducted smoothly. Let's restart the timer for Mr. Xu. Those who disagree with Ms. Lee's chairing of the meeting, then take the matter to the court. We have the rule of law. Don't just sit here and argue. We should follow the rules of procedure. Chairperson, I do agree that you have the power to stay there. We don't have to ask different legal advisors. You just ask a reasonable man. Every year, we need to have an election of a chairperson. I nominated you. Well, for the sake of fairness, you have asked the deputy chairperson to preside at the meeting over the election of the chairperson. We all have to do the same thing. It can take as short as just a few minutes to just ten minutes or so. We have been doing this for many years. Now, we're told that rules of procedures cannot block the loophole. It's very simply put, before the new chairperson is returned, you continue to be the chairperson. There is no room for argument. Dennis Kwak, as the deputy chair, could have used this power to drag the matter on. Everyone will suffer. Bills cannot go through the procedure because of this. Anyone with any common sense will be aware of that. It looks like that a lot of people have said goodbye to their common sense in the past six months. Mr. Ma Fengkong, thank you. I rarely speak because I don't want to waste time. What happened today or before today is described as unreasonable by the If you burn, you burn. If we burn, you burn with us camp. But if Mr. Dennis Kwak had acted in accordance with the rules of procedure and with common sense, this would not have had happened. I thank the legal advisor for her explanation. She has given us a very clear legal foundation and basis. That Ms. Dari Lee has the power to continue to preside at this meeting is clearly explained. There is no need for us to doubt anything. We're talking about very important procedures, legislative procedures in Hong Kong. With Ms. Dari Lee chairing the meeting, I think she can set, she can set us back on the right track. Mr. Dennis Kwak has said it. One of the goals is to hinder the passage of the National Anthem Bill. The National Anthem Law has been passed by our country and it is incorporated into annex three of our Basic Law. We have the duty to pass the bill. That is very important. Thank you. Mr. Vincent Chang, thank you. First, I thank Chairperson. And I'd like to say that I support you in the conduct of the meeting. Maybe many people don't understand why there is a scuffle here. I do hope that they would understand. We have no choice. We've had seventeen meetings. The job of Mr. Dennis Kwak was to return a chairperson. After seventeen meetings, he still fail to do, fails to do it. Because of that, um livelihood-related issues have stopped. That includes the extension of maternity leave. If it can, if the process cannot be completed within the end uh within this term of legislative year, a lot of families will be affected. I do hope that the House Committee will resume um business as usual. The opposition has used a physical scuffle to try to stop Chairperson. Ms. Claudia Moore has used rather offensive language to attack you. That is unreasonable. According to the legal advisor, well, members here would like to hear from the legal advisor. Everything is in order and it should stay like this.
已经完成了，跟我呃
And now that all the members have completely hit this speaking, I need to make a ruling. I agree with Regina Yip. Well, the legal opinion, all opinions after all, and such differences are perfectly normal. As a chairperson, I've been very cautiously exercising my powers. A source of powers that derive from this, the R O P and the House rules. R O P and the House rules have empowered me the authority as a chairman, and seventy-five bracket two is quite clear that as the chairman of the committee shall hold office until the chairman and deputy chairman of the committee for next session are respectively elected. And the R O P and the House will have not undermined my powers. At the beginning, I respect the opinion provided by the legal advisor and exercise my power cautiously. And today, I still respect the view of the legal service department. So we need to deal with this backlog. So I shall deal with the urgent and important business under power derived from R O P and the House rules. I understand the members' differences in opinion. While this is the real block, if members have divergent views or question me, I believe they are pursued through other channels, which include the legal avenue. And I have made this ruling out of caution and shall continue to chair the meeting in dealing with urgent and essential business. So that concludes the end of this item. Let's move to second, Legal Service Division and report on bills referred to the House Committee in accordance to fifty-four bracket four. According to the House Record for the fourteen bills referred to the Bills Committee, we settle in Appendix Two. I invite the legal advisor to talk about this fourteen regulations. First, the mandatory property fund scheme amendment bill twenty nineteen. Our report is L S six slash sixteen nineteen twenty. The bill seeks to amend the mandatory property fund scheme ordinance and its subsidiary legislation. A, empower the mandatory property fund scheme authority, M P F A, to establish a wholly owned subsidiary to facilitate the performance of these functions and set as central as a platform in dealing with administrative work of the M P F schemes. And B, revise the amount of annual registration fee payable to M P F A by the approved trustee of the registered provenance scheme. Trustee proposed scheme involving a new authority conferred by the M P F A and also uh increasing the amount of annual registration fee. The members can consider setting a bills committee to look into this bill. As for the mandatory property fund scheme amendment bill twenty nineteen, and members requested formation of bills committee. Mr. Chairman Chong likely set a bills committee. Anyone joining? Uh, we will circulate members. And two, legal rating amendment bill twenty nineteen. Our report is on L S four nineteen twenty. It's to amend the rating ordinance to introduce special rate chargeable on certain private domestic premises. They're unsold for a certain period of time after the issue occupation permit and should be a double of the uh of a two hundred percent of the market value. And it was it was start after six months about gazette. And the burning housing of business on the median first of April, and some members have if that's concerned, it's a new raise mechanism. I suggested members form a bills committee to look into this. Abraham Chek would like to set up a bills committee. When this bill was tabled, that it only had one meeting at the panel on housing. I think more consultation we need to be done. And in the current situation, we shouldn't. And would the government really want to table this bill at this time? I urge precaution because you affect the whole property market. I understand Mr. Chek's concern. Would you like to set up a bills committee? I request the administration could check for consultation to reconsider. Okay, we shall use on record. Any members who like to set up a bills committee? Mr. Attorney Chair would like to set up a bills committee. Any members joining? Abraham Chek. Okay, we shall circulate the papers to gauge members' interest and also Stephen Hall. And thirdly, fright container safety amendment bill twenty nineteen. The L S D have prepared two reports, what L S two slash nineteen twenty, another one is a further report, L S twenty-one slash nineteen twenty. The bill seeks to amend the fright container safety ordinance differently to implement the latest requirements of the International Convention for Safe Containers adopted by the International Maritime Organization related to manufacture, use and examination of fright containers and the marking and fixing of safety approval plates. And on the twenty eighteen November sixteen, the government advised by the panel on economic development and the government's web support, we have checked through the provisions. We saw that um the drafting of the bill is quite fine that we suggested it could resume the second reading. Any members would like to set up a bills committee? Any member would like to set up a bills committee? Ms. Abraham Chek would like to set up a bill committee. Okay, uh, we circulate the papers to gauge the interests. For supplemental appropriation bill twenty eighteen nineteen, our report is L S fourteen slash nineteen fifteen is according to the public finance ordinance and so seek to provide ourselves a measure appropriation for the service of the government in the financial union and the thirty-first of March twenty nineteen to the amount of thirty-six point seven billion dollars. In addition to the sum appropriated by the the appropriation on the twenty eighteen. And the finance committee had approved this appropriation and been authorized by the finance committee. If this bill is passed, it will be effect on the date that we get settled. So the money had already been spent, but now we're simply uh fought with a draft bill. Since we found the elected chairman over six months, so this bill in effect is about the money spent. However, those members still have the right to form a bills committee with any member, like you said, a bills committee. We want to know that this amount has been fully spent. If not, next bill, Pharmacy and Poison Amendment Bill twenty nineteen, our report is L S sixteen slash nineteen twenty. The bill seeks to regulate advanced therapy products, A T Bs, namely gene therapy products, semantic cell therapies product and tissue engineering products as pharmaceutical products. So as these products are under the regulated by the pharmacies and poison ordinance and pharmacy and poisons regulation framework. The administration on the fifteenth of April twenty nineteen had consulted the panel of health services, generally support, but expressed certain concerns. This bill have suggested to establish a new regulation mechanism on the advanced therapy products and members will express concern and members would consider setting bills committees carefully study it. This L S Max would like to set a bills committee. Anyone would like to join? Anyone else? Okay, we shall circulate the papers to gauge members' interests. Six, copyright amendment bill twenty nineteen, our report is L S eighteen nineteen twenty. The bill seeks to amend the copyright ordinance to enhance copyright exception relating people with print disability in order to bring this exception into line with the standard setup of the Marrakech Treaty to facilitate access to published works for persons who are blind, visually impaired and otherwise print and disabled. The administration can and also give a introduction, a briefing on the panel of commerce industry on twenty seventh February and express support is in principle, but this is very concerned. The L S D is still studying the provisions because have expanded the copyright ordinance exceptions to persons with print disability. Members can consider what to set a bills committee to scrutinize this bill. But any member would like to set up a bills committee follow on copyright amendment bill twenty nineteen. If not, please continue. Number seven, road traffic legislation, parking spaces amendment bill twenty nineteen. The L S twenty-two slash nineteen twenty. The bill seeks to amend the road traffic orders and other specified travel legislation provided for the use of electronic means to that to introduce a new parking media vehicle scheme in twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. And and also provide for the new offenses as well as for the annul the outdated provisions on paying through cash. And the government had briefed the panel on transport on the nineteenth of January twenty eighteen. So this is about setting a new generation of electronic oh, parking payment. So members can consider setting a bills committee. On number seven, anyone would like to set a bills committee, Mr. Attorney Chair would like to set a bills committee. Okay, please circulate the papers to gauge members' interest. Number eight, St. John's College Amendment Bill, Amendment Bill twenty nineteen, legal advisor, please. L S nine slash nineteen twenty.
It was raised by Honorable Jimmy Moon Ka, and it seeks to amend the St. John's College ordinance so as to give protection to members of the body corporate incorporated under the ordinance and some of the persons mentioned in the ordinance and to give the body corporate certain express powers. Well, if this is endorsed, it will be gazetted and the commencement will start from that date. It doesn't involve profit expenditure. It doesn't involve any government operation or political setup or any government policies. Mr. Jimmy Hung has consulted the views of the panel, but he hasn't received any comments on the bill. Um, does any member wish to set up a bills committee? If not, then please continue.
Fishers' protection amendment bill twenty nineteen. Our report is L S thirty nineteen slash hyphen twenty. The bill seeks to amend the fisheries protection ordinance one seven one to empower the director of A F C D to exercise discretion and provide for the registration issue of provision approvals for registration of local fishing vessels in respect which there are no valid operating license on fifteen June twenty twelve. And provide the issue of certificate of eligibility for the registration in relation to former trawlers for which there were no valid operating license on fifteen June twenty twelve. And the government had consulted the fishermen's organizations and they welcomed the administration proposal. The L S D is examining the drafting and the provisions and members can consider whether to set a bills committee. Any members would like to set a bills committee? Mr. Gary Chin would like to set it. Anyone who like to join? His circulation to gauge members' interests. And inland revenue amendment, profit tax concession for insurance-related business bill twenty eighteen. Our report is L S thirty-two slash nineteen twenty.
The purpose is to amend the inland revenue ordinance so as to provide for process tax concessions for general reinsurance business and certain types of general insurance business of direct insurers and certain types of insurance brokerage business. We're still scrutinizing the bill since it extend. It will extend the prospect relief to certain insurance-related businesses. You may want to set up a bills committee. Does anyone wish to set up a bills committee? Mr. Abraham Chek would like to set up a bills committee to follow on the bill. We will circulate memo to seek your interest to join. All right, the eleventh one. Court proceedings, electronic technology bill. Legal advisor, it seeks to provide for the use and phased implementation of electronic technology in relation to proceedings in a court and other court-related purposes as an alternative to conventional paper-based methods. In relation to this bill, on the twenty ninth of April twenty nineteen, the panel on administrative justice and legal services held a discussion. At that time, some members raised certain concerns. Well, for this bill, it is going to introduce a new mode of operation as to how to dispose of the court proceedings. Members may wish to set up a bills committee to look into that. Does anybody wish to set up a bills committee? Mr. Abraham Chek proposes. Does anybody wish to join immediately? No, then we circulate paper. The twelfth one, statute law miscellaneous provisions bill twenty nineteen. Legal advisor. Thank you. Please refer to paper L S thirty-eight slash nineteen to twenty. Well, in fact, it is a matter of miscellaneous amendments. It seeks to amend the high court ordinance as well as the interpretation and general clauses ordinance. Amen the high court ordinance as well as the interpretation and general clauses ordinance. Among the various amendments, um we have the following. Extension of the jurisdiction of the Court of Appeal, which consists of two justices of appeal. Under cap four and then under the cap one. Uh there will be an extension of references made to ordinances which are recognized under cap one to those preferences made according to the title, citation or chapter number used in the verified copies that directly printed from the approved website of an electronic database of the legislation in Hong Kong. So it will be regarded as an acceptable form. The administration briefed the A J O S P. Um the on the twenty fourth of June twenty nineteen, my members raised no objection. Um they have not been consulted on other legislative amendments. We're still scrutinizing the bill. We will come up with a further report. Would you like to set up a bills committee? Miss An Jane would like to set up a bills committee. Anybody wishing to join right now? Mister Abraham Shack, uh cloud, please circulate paper for the membership. The thirteenth item inland revenue amendment tax concessions bill twenty twenty, legal advisor, please. Thank you, Chair. LS fifty three slash nineteen to twenty. This is to amend the inland revenue ordinance to give effect to a proposal concerning tax concessions in the budget introduced by the government. For the twenty 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 one financial year, namely reducing the service tax, profits tax and tax under personal assessment payable for the year of assessment twenty nineteen twenty. By one hundred percent subject to assessing of twenty thousand dollars in each case. We have looked at the legal and drafting aspects. We don't find any issues. Anybody wishing to set up a bills committee to follow this up? Does anybody wish to set up a bills committee? No, then we move on. The fourteenth item. Inland Revenue Amendment Ship Leasing Tax Concessions Bill twenty twenty, legal advisor, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Paper LS fifty one slash nineteen to twenty, it seeks to amend the inland revenue ordinance to give effect to the policy initiative announced by the chief executive in the twenty eighteen policy address. And the financial secretary in the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget speech to carry out certain tax concessions. This is to foster ship leasing activities in Hong Kong by giving profit tax concessions to qualifying shiplesses and qualifying ship leasing managers. Um when passed, then this will be implemented on the date of the settle. On the twenty sixth of November twenty nineteen, the administration briefed the panel on economic development. Generally speaking, members were in support of the proposal. Thank you, legal advisor. Does anybody wish to set up a bills committee? Does anybody wish to sell the bills committee? If not. There are fourteen bills. They have been in the backlog and now we have been uh we have dealt with the um the the bills. Uh I choose to deal with them today because if we make a decision today. And then if we have um time, next week we can start the examination of the bills. So it's to discharge our duties under the basic law. Altogether nine bills committees have been set up. But then. We have only got seven vacancies in relation to the number of bills committees available. So we will invite the secretariat to take up the matter with the administration. Six months, seven months have already passed. And we will have to check with the administration about the priority of the bills to be dealt with. We'll make a report to you next time. Item three. Eagle Service Division reports on subsidiary legislation get settled since the twenty seventh of March twenty twenty. Thirty one items of subsidiary legislation and you find. A list of such in appendix three. We have also tabled um a list for your reference. I'll invite the L A to walk us through them briefly. L A, please. L A. Employees Retraining Ordinance, Amendment of Schedule Four Notice twenty twenty, L N twenty nine. This is to amend Schedule Four of the E R O in relation to the monthly. Retraining allowance of an eligible trainee. The maximum amount will be raised from four thousand dollars to fifty eight hundred dollars a month. It will come into effect on the twenty fifth of May twenty twenty. I will check the legal and drafting aspects. They are fine. All right, in relation to the first one, there is L N twenty nine. Anybody wishing to set up a subcommittee to follow this up? No? Mister Abraham Shack would like to set up a subcommittee. The secretariat will circulate a paper. Does anybody wish to join now? All right, L A, please. And then for the following ten items. They are related to the prevention and control. Of COVID nineteen. First of all, L N thirty one. That's in relation to the catering industry. As well as the premises. Scheduled, there is um game centers, um places of public entertainment and also party common uh places called party rooms. Uh a number of temporary measures are to be in place so as to prevent and control COVID nineteen. For L N thirty two. For L N twenty thirty two, well, at that time, uh it is said that group gatherings of more than four persons would be prohibited, but now it has been changed. But back then for L N thirty two, it was. Get settled on the twenty seventh of March. For this L N, there are certain exemptions, say for example. If you are at a workplace. You have a gathering or we have some proceedings at the legislature council and then the gathering is necessary. And the L N also sets out the offense as well as the penalty. For L N thirty one to thirty two or thirty three. On the twenty seventh of June and twenty eighth of June midnight respectively, they will lapse. I'm referring to L N thirty one and thirty two. Now come to L N thirty three. For L N thirty three, it seeks to amend L N thirty one. So as to add six types of premises, so as to bring them under regulation as well. Beauty parlor, clubhouse. Uh establishment, there is oh uh there is open late into the night, you should for drink and dancing or other establishments, karaoke establishments, mahjong. King Kong premises and massage establishment. At that time, the intention. Was to up extend the restrictions to the six types of premises. It came into effect at three P M on the first of April and it will lapse on the twenty seventh of June midnight. Well, tabled before you is a list and I would like to turn to um L N. Forty six to fifty two. L N forty six is to amend. Schedule one of the prevention and control of disease ordinance. Uh well, earlier on, it was called differently. Now it has been updated. To call the disease COVID nineteen and then. For L N forty eight to fifty two, um we have other amendments as well. For L N forty eight, uh it is about. The compulsory quarantine of certain persons arriving at Hong Kong and the um date that will will lapse will be the seventh of June. The C S powers to grant exemptions and also um that the health officers can cancel quarantine orders are also provided for. For L N forty nine, um the prevention and control of disease disclosure of information regulation. Uh will have the expiry date extended from seventh of May to thirty first of August twenty twenty. L N seventy one. That's about um. Sorry, L N fifty two, that's about the prohibition on group gathering regulation. Other than the S F. H, uh other public officers can also have the power to impose penalties like the commissioner police, the director of agriculture, fisheries and conservation, director of food and environmental hygiene. Director of Home Affairs, Director of Housing and the Director of Leisure and Cultural Services. For L N forty six to fifty two, uh they came into effect on the twenty ninth of April. Is fifty nine. L N fifty nine. Yes, L N fifty nine falls into the same category. There's prevention and control of disease provision on group gathering. Well, um at first the prohibition is about uh a group of no more than four persons and now it has been uh expanded to eight persons instead. Legal advisor, anything else? All right, so altogether, ten items of subsidiary legislation have been mentioned and they're in relation to the. Prevention and control of the epidemic. Sorry, I need to rectify myself. Eleven items. Anybody wishing to set up a subcommittee? To check the eleven items. Miss Rebecca Chan would like to set up a subcommittee. Elizabeth Court and Abraham Chev Vincent Chan would like to join. So please circulate paper to find out more about the membership. We can move on to the um. Next item, Group C, there is ten items of subsidy registration gets settled on the seventeenth of April. Yes, uh L N thirty four and L N thirty eight, and this is simulation to. The planned commissioning of Tin Mun Chelap Coke Tunnel and the Changquan Old Lam Ting Tunnel. In brief terms, it means that they would like to uh add their names to schedule one. To road tunnels government ordinance so that the provisions would also apply to the two tunnels. And then for L N thirty five to thirty seven, that's in relation to the. Um C E's uh initiative in the policy address, which seeks to waive the toes of the Lantau Ling and the Changquan Old Tunnel upon commissioning of the two tunnels. And then um. Except for one, which will come into effect on the first of July, the rest will come into effect on the date to be uh get settled by the S T H. So L N thirty four to thirty eight, does any member wish to set up a subcommittee to follow them up? Miss Chan, Mister Chan Han Pang wants to set up one. Abraham Shack would like to join. So uh please uh circulate paper. All right, um. L N thirty nine. That's in relation to the. Road traffic public service vehicles amendment regulation twenty twenty. And that's in relation to the maximum gross vehicle weight. Specify for light bus, it will be enhanced from five point five to eight point five tons and the maximum overall range will also be enhanced from seven to seven point five meters. So as to allow light buses with more environmental benefits and barrier fee facilities to be introduced in Hong Kong. For L N forty, that's in relation to road traffic public service vehicles amendment number two regulation twenty twenty. And that's in relation to the requirement to show or display a destination indicator. And then um there are certain requirements concerning the colors uh of the um. Wordings in English. It is said that the uh light bus sector has been consulted and we and they have their support. For L N forty uh for both of them, they come into operation on the fifth of July twenty twenty. So for the two pieces of subsidiary legislation, uh does anybody wish to set up a committee? Mister Abraham Shack. Anybody wishing to join? Uh yes, and then uh please uh go to. L N forty one Pharmacy and Poison's Amendment Number Two Regulation twenty twenty. So for schedule one, schedule three and schedule ten, six substances are to be added. So that they are subject to restrictions with respect to their sale, supply, labeling and storage. And then they can only be sold by retail upon a prescription given by a doctor. And then, since they have been included into the poisonous list, so. We need a registered pharmacies or in the presence and supervision of the registered uh pharmas that you can uh buy it. It came into effect on the seventeenth of April twenty twenty when it was get settled. So for L N forty one, does any member wish to set up a subcommittee to follow this up? All right, no? All right, and then L N forty two, L N forty three. For L Ns forty two and forty three, this is mainly to take on board. The O E C T's request, that is in relation to the implementation of the automatic exchange of financial account information in tax matters. So uh we need to uh implement the assessments. So under the A U O I mechanism. We need to. Amen the relevant percentages. Instead of twenty five percent, it will be. Reduced to zero in relation to uh partnership, etc. And then for L N forty two, that's in relation to know your customer as well as ways to uh compete from. Money laundering, so that uh this is in line with the F A T F's recommendations. Um. In this way. Those financial institutions that need to make reports can find out whether somebody is a person in control. In fact, in November twenty nineteen, the administration issued letters to relevant stakeholders from the financial business and accounting and legal sectors. The response mainly uh told the administration that they did not hold different views. On the seventeenth of March twenty twenty. The panel on financial affairs was given a briefing and members did not object to that. For the two uh LNs, they come into effect or come into operation on the twenty first. On the first of January twenty twenty one. So for L N forty three, any member wishing to set up a subcommittee? Uh so inland revenue ordinance, no? All right. Mister Abraham Shack would like to set up a subcommittee. Anybody wishing to join? All right, we'll circulate a paper so to find out about it. The. Two subsidiary legislation gets added on the twenty fourth of April twenty twenty as well as a two uh government notice. Paper LS sixty six stroke nineteen to twenty. First of all, it's L N forty four. This is. Done under the banking cap uh gap banking ordinance to amend the banking capital rules as well as. To implement the latest. calculation methods by um the bank. Banking Association. This is in relation to the standardized approach for measuring counterparty credit risk exposures. By the Basel Committee on Banking Supervision. The Financial Services Panel. Have not been. Consulted, however, uh they have been notified on the May on the sixth of May twenty nineteen as well as March second. That um they plan to amend the. Uh this uh stand uh this um. Regulation. It will come into operation on the top thirtieth of June twenty twenty one. If necessary, we will uh supply a supplementary report because of its sheer length. In relation to L N forty four. Anyone who asked uh to set up a subcommittee to follow this up? No, let's continue. L N forty five. This is uh in LS sixty six. This is made by the Secretary for the Environment under the Air Pollution Control Ordinance. To. Amen emission standards. In order to um implement a more stringent vehicle design standards. To control pollution. For vehicles um that. Have a design weight of uh more than three point five tons and buses having the design weight of not more than nine tons registered on or after the first of March twenty twenty one. Uh they will have to implement Euro six onboard. that knocks sticks face C standard. On motorcycles registered on or after the first of October, twenty-twenty, Euro four emission standard will be implemented. It will come into operation on the first of October, twenty-twenty. In relation to L N forty-five, do you need to set up a subcommittee? Mr. Abraham Chek asked to set up a subcommittee. We will circulate the document to gauge response. L N forty, this is Government Notice two oh five six. This is to revise the road users code. The Secretary for Transport and Housing revised the road users code under the road traffic ordinance. It was last updated in two thousand. There has been some revisions in the law to provide additional information to road users and to update information. The T H B plans to, plans that this code is, plans for the code to come into effect on the nineteenth of June this year. This is a subsidiary legislation under the road traffic ordinance. So it has to be tabled at the council meeting. If necessary, members may move amendments. In relation to Government Notice two oh five six, does anyone require the subcommittee to set up? Mr. Abraham Chek, Mr. Tony Teo asked to join in. Group E. Subsidiary legislation get settled on the twenty-ninth of April, twenty-twenty. There are six of them. Paper number L S sixty-nine, stroke nineteen-twenty. Legal advisor. First is L N fifty-three and fifty-four. They are in relation to the period between the first of December, twenty-nineteen and thirtieth of November, twenty-twenty. Um, in relation to some relaxations or concessions on sewage charge and charge for freshwater supply. That is in relation to supply of freshwater to certain types. There will be a reduction of seventy-five percent of sewage charge. But it's subject to a ceiling of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. L N forty-four is set down under the Water Works Ordinance. It also proposes a reduction of seventy-five percent subject to a maximum amount of twenty thousand dollars. These two notices have already come into operation when they are get settled on the twenty-ninth of April. In relation to L N fifty-three and fifty-four, any requests for subcommittees? No, please continue. Fifty-five, fifty-six and fifty-seven. L N fifty-five, fifty-six and fifty-seven. They aim to cancel conveyance fees for cross-boundary ferry vessels between Hong Kong Macau Ferry Terminal and China Ferry Terminal. And also ferry services to mainland cities. In relation to the three legal notices, they will come into operation on the first of August this year. In relation to the three notices, fifty-five to fifty-seven, Ms. Priscilla Leng asked for subcommittees to be set up. Mr. Abraham Chek will join. Please circulate the paper. L N fifty-eight. This is to amend a schedule of the Tax Reserve Certificate. It specified that in relation to tax reserve certificate issued on or after eleven of April, nineteen eighty, the annual rate will be not point two three 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 percent. The last time it was revised was some time ago. Back then, it was last fixed at not point three one six seven percent. It has already come into operation on the twenty-ninth of April. Any members ask for a subcommittee to be set up in relation to L N fifty-eight in relation to Tax Reserve Certificate? No. That's all for subsidiary legislations. Next. Let me remind members. In relation to the fourteen subsidiary legislations tabled on the twenty-second of April, well, they noticed the deadline for giving notice is the twentieth of May. If there is an extension, it can be extended to the tenth of June. In relation to the ten subsidiary legislation tabled on the twenty-ninth of April, that is, L N forty-four to fifty-two, as well as Government Notice two oh five six. Deadline for giving notice to amend is the twenty-seventh of May. If there is an extension, it can be extended to the council meeting on the seventeenth of June. Seven subsidiary legislation has been tabled on the sixth of May, namely, L N fifty-three to fifty-nine. That deadline for giving notice of amendment is the third of June. If there is an extension, it can be extended to the twenty-fourth of June. Item four, senior judicial appointment. The Director for Administration has sent a letter on the twenty-fourth of March, twenty-twenty. It's been issued on the same day. The C E made an announcement on the twenty-fourth of March that she has accepted the Judicial Officers Recommendation Commission's recommendation on the appointment of Honorable Mr. Justice Andrew Young as Chief Justice of the Court of Final Appeal. According to our rules, I now ask members if they would like to set up a subcommittee to look into this. Ms. Priscilla Leng. We've decided to is to, what the recommendation has been accepted? Perhaps I am just too tired. Ms. Priscilla Leng, you want to set up a subcommittee? Who will join? Mrs. Regina Ip, Mr. Porter, as well as Mr. Junis Hall. The administration will wait for the deliberation of the subcommittee before moving a motion to ask for the endorsement of the Latch goal. A report of the Bills Committee on Hotel and Guest House Accommodation Amendment Bill, twenty eighteen. Mr. Yu Shiwing.
Thank you, Chair. The Hotel and Guest House Accommodation Amendment Bill, twenty eighteen, seeks to improve the existing licensing regime, facilitate enforcement actions and enhance deterrence so as to discourage unlicensed hotels and guesthouses. The Bills Committee held five meetings and received views from the public. Members looked at the views of many deputies on the need to step up regulation and enforcement against unlicensed hotels or guesthouses which caused safety, hygiene and security concerns and serious nuisance to the community. In the course of the deliberation, members voiced their concern about the introduction of strict liability offense, the validity periods of licenses and new licensing requirements. Some members were concerned about the impact of the bill on the development of homestay lodging. The administration and the Bills Committee will not propose any amendments to the bill. The Bills Committee raises no objection to the resumption of the second reading debate on the bill at a future council meeting. Please note the details of our scrutiny set out in the written report. Thank you. Alright, thank you, Mr. Yu. B, Report of the Bills Committee on Fire Safety in Industrial Buildings Bill. I'd like to invite Mr. Tony Che, the Chair of the Bills Committee, to speak. Thank you. Fire Safety in Industrial Building Bill seeks to provide for a regulatory mechanism for industrial buildings constructed on or before the first of March, nineteen eighty-seven, or having their building plans first submitted to the Building Authority for approval on or before that date so that the owners and occupiers must upgrade the fire safety standards to the prescribed levels. Five meetings were held by the Bills Committee. One of the meetings, we received views from the public. We were concerned about the fire safety provisions and standards of the target buildings, the law enforcement mechanism, the powers of the law enforcement agencies and how the authorities are going to help owners and occupiers to comply with the requirements. The details are set out in our report. In the light of members' views, the administration is going to propose a number of committee stage amendments, but the Bills Committee itself is not going to move any amendments. We raise no objection to the resumption of the second reading debate on the bill at a future council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tony Teo. C, Report of the Bills Committee on Discrimination Legislation Miscellaneous Amendment Bill, twenty eighteen. I ask the Chairperson of the Bills Committee, Ms. L S Mack, to speak. The bill seeks to amend various provisions in the Sex Discrimination Ordinance, the Disability Discrimination Ordinance and the Race Discrimination Ordinance to widen the scope of protection under these ordinances and to remove the requirement of the intention to discriminate for making an award of damages for certain acts of indirect discrimination under Sex Discrimination Ordinance, Race Discrimination Ordinance and Family Status Discrimination Ordinance. The Bills Committee has held five meetings to scrutinize the bill. Deliberations are found in the written report. Main concerns of members include new provisions on protection of breastfeeding women against discrimination and the scope of application. Protection from harassment on the ground of breastfeeding. Scope of protection against sexual disability and racial harassment on participants of the same workplace. Protection against harassment by clubs and the scope of application and applicability of the anti-discrimination ordinances in the West County Station mainland port area. To address members' views, the administration will move amendments to improve the clarity of the proposed definition of breastfeeding to include volunteer and intern in the proposed definition of workplace participant to provide a more comprehensive protection. The Bills Committee does not oppose to these proposed amendments, nor will it move other amendments. In addition, having considered the views of members, the administration agreed to introduce a separate bill for the purpose of prohibiting harassment on the ground of breastfeeding. Members welcome the proposal. The Bills Committee supports the resumption of the second reading of the bill. The administration will notify the Bills Committee on the date.
Thank you, L S Mack. D, Occupational Retirement Scheme Amendment Bill, twenty nineteen, report. I invite the Chairman of the Christopher Cheng to speak. Chairman, the aim of this bill is to prevent the misuse of the occupational retirement schemes as an investment vehicle and to ensure that such scheme are employment-based. The Bills Committee has held one meeting to discuss with the deal with the administration and invited the relevant organizations and the public to give written views on the bill. The members in general support the proposed amendments in the bill. In the course of deliberations, the members have examined the relevant issues in detail, including the proposed employment-based criterion, the interpretation of employment and the impact on employers and the treatment of non-employees members in the O R S O schemes and the various provisions related to enforcement actions. The administration will propose a number of textual and technical amendments. The Bills Committee has raised no objections to the proposed amendments and will not propose any amendments on the bill. The Bills Committee raised no objection to resume their second reading debate on the bill at the future council meeting. The members invite to note the deliberations of the Bills Committee in the report. Thank you, Christopher Cheng. That after the whole Bills Committee, of the forty, we've vacated four available slots. So in the previous of the nine Bills Committee can already commence work as well, we had completed the agenda today. I would like to inform the public that for me to include these items in today's agenda have also taken reference the views of the Secretary and the legal advisor. These are considered urgent bills that require action. So these are mainly bills and subsidiary legislation for all other matters. As since we have first set the first session meeting, I will deal with the others in due course. Priscilla Leng, if we have a meeting next time, well, you have to arrange the legislative, the last item of the agenda. This is just a suggestion. Please don't put it on the first item. Your views were noted. Well, today we have very long meeting and thank you for your patience. The end of today's meeting, thank you for coming.